Good evening, and well, this is not loud enough yet. All right, it's still not, but that's, yeah, there you go. Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 24th. I'm going to call the meeting to order and take a motion for an executive session. Want to remind everybody that at the end of the executive session, we'll be back, but no sooner than 6:15 to continue the open session. So with that, Mark, make a motion.
Chair, I move we go into executive session for A pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. IAMA W International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, SEIU 888, Service Employees International Union, Howard's Management Employees Association, and HEA, Howard's Employees Association. B pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Fire Chief David LeBlanc. C pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, 21a6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the whole, of the public body. Assesses map 82, partial R5. D pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements. The open meeting law, Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, 22f and g, to discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated September 9th, 2024, November 25th, 2024, and December 16th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, take a vote. Alita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Pete is going to join us downstairs, and again, we will not be back to the open session until at least 6:15. And I am very pleased to announce that we have just signed a new contract with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, based on an MOU that we worked out earlier. So we continue moving forward. I'd like you all to join me with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and united as one, liberty, and justice for all.
I'm going to break the order of the agenda in recognition of the two people who the chief has brought in this evening, so I'd like to have that as a special focus.
Thank you, Kevin Consonine, Police Chief. I appreciate the board's time. Further down on your consent agenda is recommendation for approval for appointment of our newest student officer, Olivia Keterling. So I just want to read what was in the packet and tell you a few things. The Howard Police Department has an authorized strength of 35 sworn full-time officers. The department currently has one full-time police officer position vacant. The department has completed a hiring process and has produced an outstanding student officer candidate, Olivia. The candidate has completed all the requirements under Massachusetts General Law to attend the next session of the 22-week Massachusetts Police Training Committee, East Falmouth Police Academy, which is scheduled to start on December 1st, 2025. As you know, East Falmouth was the academy that made a lot of news this past year. They have a brand-new director. I am very confident that we will have a great experience in the East Falmouth Academy this time around. Olivia grew up in Lee, Massachusetts, and attended Westfield State University and graduated in May of 2025 with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice and a minor in English. Olivia also holds a certification as an emergency medical technician. Prior to Olivia joining our department, Olivia was a community service officer for the Provincetown Police Department over the last two years, where she provided non-sworn public safety service, including traffic control, parking enforcement, and community engagement while supporting public safety operations for Provincetown. Therefore, it's my recommendation on the consent agenda requesting that Olivia Keterling be appointed as a student officer effective November 30th, 2025. Also in packet is the conditional law of employment. Just to go on a little more with Olivia, when she came up to command staff interviews with myself and the command staff, two things stood out to me. First, Olivia was able to secure housing in Howard. She wanted to move to Howard. Obviously, she grew up in Western Massachusetts and loves the Cape and decided after P-Town to stay on the Cape. So that is a success story by all means. The second thing was her willingness and her want to come to a department that is very active in the community. Olivia had heard all about Howard and knew how much I think she would fit in with community policing and what we do in our department. So it's my pleasure to introduce to the board and to the community Olivia, and can't wait till she's on the schedule making an impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take, we'll take some action after you.
Perfect. And Darren Morgan. Secondly, introduce to the board and our community Police Chaplain Darren Morgan. Since 2004, the Howard Police Department has an, has had an active chaplain program serving our officers in our community to meet the spiritual needs of our citizens during, and our department during times of crisis. Longtime Reverend James David has been the Police Chaplain since that time when this program was founded. And to meet the needs of the specialized service and to continue to have a strong chaplain program, a new chaplain is necessary. With the assistance of Massachusetts State Police Chaplain Coordinator Kate Gallup, Reverend Darren Morgan from the Federated Church of Orleans has agreed to accept this voluntary position. Reverend Morgan began his career in the United States Army as a military policeman and criminal investigator. After his service, he worked as a police officer for the York Main Police Department, where his dad was also the police chief, from 19, and Darren was there from 1985 to 1990. Reverend Morgan then entered the field of health and human services before entering the field of ministry. Reverend Morgan is the senior pastor of the Federated Church of Orleans and on November 7th was sworn in as a chaplain for the Massachusetts State Police, assigned to Troop D. Troop D covers all of southeastern Massachusetts State Police barracks. Reverend Morgan also recently attended the law enforcement chaplains program at the Maine Criminal Justice Academy, where he completed courses by the International Conference of Police Chaplains. He also just completed our 10-week Howard Police Citizens Academy. I look forward to working with Reverend Morgan, and I wish him, and I want to thank him for his eagerness to volunteer for this important position and his important work he will do in our community. And, you know, I've been looking since I was appointed for a police chaplain. It's been, it's been difficult. Reverend Morgan just landed. I went to a press conference with the Colonel of the State Police and was offered the services because of his other duties with the State Police. And as long as we don't take him away too, too much, that was the deal. But so happy to have Reverend Morgan here, and I don't know if you want to say a couple words?
Happy to be of service to the town of Howard, being neighbors. And we have various personages from, from my congregation who live in Howard.
Great. So where I'd like to go with this, with the consent of the board, is since we have the contingent from the Police Department here that has just arrived, and we have some time constraints, I'd like to be able to move this out of order to make the motions for these two appointments, if that's agreeable, everyone.
Like, yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, I make a motion to appoint Olivia Keterling to stu, as a student officer as recommended by the police chief effective November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to make the appointment to Olivia. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations. All right.
Okay, I move that we appoint Police Darren L. Morgan as the Police Chaplain, as written in our agenda this evening.
Second. It's moved and seconded to appoint Chaplain Darren L. Morgan. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations and thank you. These are always the best parts of our meetings. Thank you.
Chair, do we have access to the chaplain? Does this board have access to the chaplain that we need?
If that were the case, we'd need our own permanent chaplain.
Thank you.
But thank you very much, and I'm sure that the department will be better off with the presence of both of you.
Best of luck. Yeah, best of luck.
All right. So zipping back along, we'll give you cover, so if you want to leave. Back to the staff comments and announcements. Although, if you have anything to discuss, please do it outside. Before we get to that, if I just want to make a comment so that the public, I'll say this again at the end of the meeting, the Select Board will not be meeting next Monday in deference to the kind of workload that presents to our staff to be able to put together an agenda for next week. So we will once again meet the following Monday. So with that, now, Carolyn.
Thank you. Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director, and I wanted to just make a public notice that the Community Center weight room, the one located directly behind the front desk, will be closed for floor repairs December 2nd and 3rd. The other weight room will remain open. It is posted on the website and throughout the building, and we do have signs, but we will be getting that new flooring that we've been waiting for, so it's great news. And then just some events that are coming up. We have the decoupage by the sea oyster shells, and you can make five oyster shells. That is on December 2nd at 6:00 PM, and we do ask you to register for that, as we need to make sure we have enough supplies. And then there will be a dinner that will be serving pasta on December 4th, 5:30, at the Community Center. Then we will be doing, taking a group of individuals to Annie at the Cape Cod Theater Company, Howard Junior Theater, and we're having an after-party with the cast. So if you'd like to sign up, please, you can do that right at the Community Center. Then it's almost that time of year again, and the big red mailbox has returned that goes directly to a gentleman at the North Pole, and we are doing letters to Santa. So if you get your letters in with, we have forms for you to use, I hear that he will write you back directly. So there's naughty list and nice list, but he'll write everyone back. And then there's the Grab a Bow program. This is one of our more popular programs. You come into the Community Center, grab a bow. It will have a number on it. The number corresponds to a gift. What could be better than that? So come in and grab a bow. Then we have our, the Sound Dunes will be performing their holiday concert December 18th, a free event, at 6:00 PM. And the Winter Solstice Drum Circle will be on Friday, December 19th, at 4:00 PM. We continue to do our yoga programs. We have yoga with Barbara on Tuesdays, yoga with Casey on Wednesdays, Fun Functional Fitness with Christine. And then on December 11th, Santa Claus will be at the Community Center. There is an advertisement in our newsletter, and I do encourage you all to pick it up. This is done with a lot of effort from a lot of the different groups in town. So Santa will be there. There's crafting, story hour, a little bit of everything, and that's all free. And the Town Band Concert, also at the Community Center on December 9th. Those are all listed, and just a reminder that the weight room behind the front desk is closed December 2nd and 3rd, but you're free to come in and do other workouts. Thank you.
Very disappointing to hear that the weight room's going to be closed. I guess I'm going to have to find alternate means of exercise. All right.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just, just one comment. I was watching the Charter Commission meeting from last Thursday, and a solid point was brought up that this board used to announce the vacancies for all of our committees. So with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I'd like to run through these if I could. Board of Appeals, three alternates. Brooks Academy Museum Commission, one full. Bylaw Charter Review Committee, two full terms. Capital Outlay Committee, one full. Conservation Commission, one full term and two alternate terms. Community Preservation Committee, one full term. Cultural Council, two full terms. Golf Committee, one full term. Howard Accessibility Rights Committee, one full term. Howard Energy and Climate Committee, two full term and two alternates. Historic District and Historical Commission, one full term and one alternate. Planning Board, two alternates. Treasure Chest Committee, two alternates. Waterways Committee, two full terms and one alternate. And Youth Services, four full terms and one alternate. So if the public has any interest, please reach out to the clerk.
As a point of clarification, the one on the CPC is our appointment, right?
That is our appointment. That's correct. Thank you for that.
Sure. Anything further?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Resumes. Any more staff comments, announcements?
Did you go over item B?
Not yet. That's why I was waiting to see if there was anybody in person here. Two things, the, I'm not sure where the second one would fall. The first one is the annual Town Report photo contest. The photos are due by next Monday, although we will not be here to receive them. But we should get the photos in for both the back and the front. I also recommend for those people who are going to do this, that the, doing it in landscape, that would be this way, is probably more appropriate for the back. The front, we need some photos that, that are up and down so that you can actually see that as a book. But you need to submit them, and I suppose we can take them as JPGs, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Jen will be personally taking them. Okay. I'm not sure if this is a public comment or announcement, but I'll put it in there anyway. We are not meeting next week, so there's no way for us to make this announcement. But the stroll for the Chamber of Commerce, beginning in Harwichport, is going to be on December 5th, the Friday, but that would be preceding our next meeting. So Cindy's here, if she wants to say anything, that's where the tree lighting happens.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Select Board. Since you aren't meeting next Monday, I was reminded that I should hop on. So wanted to say that the Chamber and our many wonderful sponsors are starting the Christmas Stroll Friday, December 5th through the 7th, through all seven villages. As Mr. Howell always likes to remind me, these are Norman Rockwell moments. And thank you to your approval last week of our permit. We added a couple of new things to add to the Friday night. We have trolleys, two trolleys, that will start at the Chamber and go through Harwichport and Harwich Center and back down Bank Street from 5 to 8. So looping through two of our villages to just add some extra holiday spirit. And the Montmoi Middle School Chorus will be on both of those trolleys, leading a holiday sing-along. And then we also have four of our summer vans strategically placed throughout Harwichport on Friday night, December 5th, after the tree lighting and caroling. So they'll be 6 to 8. And as Carolyn reminded us all, there is a gentleman in a red suit that will be arriving by fire truck at 6:15 at the Chamber, and you can tell him what's on your list, naughty or nice. All of the information is on our website for the entire weekend. It is a full agenda for the weekend, but Friday night is a time to stroll through Harwichport. All of the shops will be open. Many fun things will be happening, and we look forward to seeing everyone. We also have printed copies at the Chamber. We are open all this week except for Thursday, and we will be open on the weekends and all of next week as well. So if anyone needs anything, they can come by and pick up the agenda, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Well, never step on your own headlines, so you might want to tell everybody when this begins on the 5th.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Howell. It starts at 5:30. The tree will be lit at 6:00, and the caroling is once again done by the Harwich Elementary School, and two of our churches will be leading us in the Christmas story, both the First Congregational, their new pastor, and the pastor at Pilgrim Congregational. So 5:30 in Joan Park, tree will light, be lit rather, excuse me, at 6:00 PM, and then all of the other festivities will continue until 8:00.
Thank you very much. Tony?
Thank you.
Just two announcements. One, just a reminder to folks that the Town Office will be closed the day after Thanksgiving. Also, the notice has gone out for inputs to the annual Town Report. That went out on the 21st, due no later than January the 9th, 2026. And then on the photo contest, looking at the flyer, it is PDF format for inputs on the photo contest, so thank you.
Okay, any further staff comments and announcements? Move along then. Weekly briefing.
So no, no new updates on the Phase 3 sewer project status for both 1 East and 2 West. I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that in conjunction with the sewer projects, we've had what I'll call town-sponsored drainage projects going on simultaneously, same contractor, but working for the town. So I think a little bit of confusion sometimes, wondering what everybody's doing. So you may have seen it on some of the weekly reports that we got about certain areas, particularly over by Pleasant Bay Road. It will say Town Drainage Project. So we did have one of these start on Huckleberry Path, neighborhood off Route 39 this, this week. I think created a little bit of confusion to the residents, not sure what was going on, whether it was part of the sewer project or drainage. So that is now in the weekly update and is called out as a town project for, for that.
Where would people see that in advance?
So it'll be in the weekly, you know, briefing, so we get those when the packet gets posted. So this one kind of just slipped through the cracks.
That's where the public should look each week.
Yep. Nothing new on Great Sand Lakes at this time. The Route 28 dry pipe project is progressing. We did get a notice to proceed from SRF on that project, but remember, that's all hinging on an 1130 contract award by Department of Transportation. So we're literally in the last couple of days to see whether they can award that contract in time or not. So we're still hopeful on that. As it relates to the Brooks Academy Museum, we had a kickoff meeting last week on Thursday, 11:20, discussed schedule impacts that resulted from a delay in negotiating and finalizing a contract with the engineering and architectural firm. Right now, we're looking at the first scheduled site visit on 12/5 to get that project moving. Also have an update on the golf irrigation project. They had their kickoff meeting on 11/10 with the supplier of the irrigation equipment, the contractor selected to do the work, and obviously staff at Cranberry Valley. Right now, that work is scheduled to kick off on 12/1 and get moving on, on that project. So that's all I have for weekly briefing updates.
Questions for the Town Minister? Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Uh, yep. The Howard Select Board will hold a public. Wait, no, public comments. Don't, don't jump the gun here.
Sorry.
I see a member of the public.
Good evening. Bernadette Waystack, Member of the Public, and no longer a member of the Cultural Council due to term limits, but I'm still a very avid supporter and volunteer in the cultural districts and at the Cultural Affairs Department. And I figured as long as Ms. Williams was mentioning what was going on with the Chamber, that I would highlight a couple of things in addition. The Holiday Marketplace, the Cultural Arts Municipal Building at 204 Sisson will be held on Saturday, December 6th, from 10 to 4:00. There will be vendors, open studios, special events, food, and Santa will be there, too. And also Cape Ness.
Gets around.
Yeah, he gets around. Also, Cape Ness Productions, a new production company that has begun some of its theatrical productions at the 204 in the auditorium, is getting ready to open on Thursday, December 4th, at 7:00, with a Christmas Carol by Candlelight. And tickets for those, those performances are going to be $10. The executive producer of Cape Ness felt that it was more important for the work to be seen and to be able to sort of give a little gift to everyone for this holiday season. So they'll be running, I believe, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays at 7:00, the first three week, full weekends in December. So please come and see the production. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernadette. John?
Nonchory. I'd like to speak just very briefly on the Charter Commission, and I've been authorized by the Charter Commission to speak for the board. I just want to speak about, we got elected in May of last, of this year, and we've been meeting practically every Thursday night since then. And we've gone with the task of going reviewing, going over the charter, making recommendations and changes to the charter that will eventually find its way to an election with the town to approve or disapprove of the town charter. We've had many department heads come into our meeting already, the Select Board has been one of them. We've had a few people from the general public, and that's the primary reason why I'm speaking tonight, come to our meeting or watch, like Mr. Handler has done very diligently, and I imagine some of the other board members have. Mark's been in our meeting. And I'd like to get the general public involved in our Charter Commission. It's very important. This charter is for the whole town. It's not for a department, it's not for a particular board, it's for the whole town to act upon and do as they see what they'd like to do with their own town. We do have to follow federal and state and municipal regulations and laws, but we can make amendments and recommendations to different aspects of the charter. Again, we meet every Thursday night at 6:30, usually in the, in the small meeting room here at the Town Hall, but once a month, we meet over at the Community Center. And all the meetings are available on Channel 18, I think, but we welcome the public. We really want to get the public. I'm sure the board has always seen public input sometimes is not where it should be, and we'd like to get the public involved. So thank you for your time.
I think it was probably the wrong Thursday to begin talking about, we meet every Thursday.
This Thursday, and we do take a couple Thursdays.
I'll be right over after turkey on this Thursday, then.
But, thank you.
To amplify what John just said, and to try to put it in some sort of context that people can understand in the public, number one, this is our constitution, but more importantly, you've heard through the last several years, arguments going on about whether Chapter 4, which is the Town Administrator's Chapter, governs a particular thing. This all sounds very dry to people, or whether the Select Board is. They've got a task in front of them to try to demystify everything so it's clearer about how everything works, and you don't wind up seeing food fights anymore. It's probably the best way I could put it. So it's really important to give them input so that they can have some guidance to what that might look like. So anybody else from the public for public comment? Okay, now, Mark.
Okay, Town of Howard's Notice of Public Hearing, November 24th, 2025. The Howard Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 24th, 2025, no earlier than 6:30 PM during their regularly, regularly scheduled meeting. The hearing will be in the Don B Griffin Room located at the Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Howard, for the purpose of deciding whether all property shall be taxed at the same rate for fiscal year 2026, as set forth in Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend a public hearing and provide information and testimony. the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to this matter. Remote participation will also be available. Please see the posted agenda for dial-in information. Signed, the Howard Select Board, John Howell Chair, Peter Pukowski, Peter Pukowski Vice Chair, Mark Kelleher Clerk, Anita Dussette, Jeffrey Handler.
I'll accept a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to open up the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Wiestack?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Want to call Ms. Clark?
My first order of business would be call to order the Board of Assessors meeting at 8, I'm sorry, 6:42 on November 24th. We are here before you, as we came last week, as a precursor to tonight, for our annual classification hearing for the town, where you, we as a board, make a recommendation to your board for you to vote on how we tax this community. And the staff has just received our values as of today with our new tax rate moving forward next year. And I hope you appreciated the time and energy that went into the discussion last week, because it's been far and wide across the Cape talking about residential tax exemption, and it is the most detailed that this board and the staff has gone through in my tenure as a member of the Board of Assessors of over 20 years. We understand it. And we voted, we had an earlier meeting, this is our second meeting tonight, we had a meeting at 5:30 this evening where we made our recommendations to you. And the recommendations haven't changed from where they've been for years. We are recommending to you as a board that you vote residential factor of 1, where all property in the town of Harwich is taxed at the same rate. That rate moving forward, the next fiscal year will be $5.069 per thousand. We have three other recommendations to you, that we move not to grant an open space exemption, not to grant a residential exemption, and not to grant a small commercial exemption. Again, to the two new members of the board, this is your vote as a select board. We as a Board of Assessors evaluate, have input from staff, and we make strictly a recommendation. You are the authority that will make the decision on how you tax this community. So we went great deal last week. I'm not going to do it again tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions of why we have arrived at this point. And very simply, we went around our meeting tonight, we asked the members of the board, and we asked the staff, will changing this be a benefit to the majority of the taxpayers of Harwich? To every single person on our board and to our staff, the answer was making a change is not advisable, that we feel we should continue taxing as a factor of 1 in this community. I'm open to any questions, especially to our newer members who have not gone through this process in the past. Obviously, looking forward to hear any public discussion that we may have.
I don't want to jump the gun because it's public hearing, so eventually, before we get to us, there's going to be a public comment. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments about the discussion we're about to vote on?
I left my glasses at the table. Anyway, it's a quick question for Mr. Wiestack. The sheet that was in the packet, the detail, thank you, because it details the different types of property types. Of all those property types, are any of those nonprofits?
Some maybe owns right in nonprofits.
Yes. Do we have any idea on those nonprofits? I'm assuming they don't pay property taxes?
Some, most do not, but in some...
As they file.
Pilots.
Right. Do we have any idea how much the town, I don't want to say losing out on those taxes, but just what that number may be?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Try to research it for you.
Yeah, I can send you the... I'm just curious, you know, just curious. The second one is, do you have any input on the pilot at all for fiscal '26? I heard a couple weeks ago for '25, we received roughly $66,000. Do you have any idea what February, I mean fiscal year '26 is? No idea yet.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know we hate the acronyms, pilot programs or payments in lieu of taxes that occur. The Board of Assessors do not control those. We are in the process of doing a substantial research project into looking at previous pilots, who approved them, who oversees them, who continues to oversee them. And we are probably a month away from a number of recommendations to this board on how they are done. And again, when a pilot program is done, someone in this community is responsible for signing off on a pilot program, and then we need to have someone who oversees the pilot program to make sure that is in effect for a certain period of time. And then what happens after that pilot program is over, or if it sunsets? So there's a number of factors that we've been looking into this year, and we will be coming back to this board with a number of recommendations and how to deal with pilot programs or payment in lieu of taxes.
Is that someone, the assessors or the Board of Select Board?
Ultimately, it's us. We have nothing to do with it. We will implement what has been approved by another body. The other body at this point is the Select Board.
Okay. And I realize that the pilot or payment in lieu of taxes is completely volunteer, too. There's no requirements that any of these people pay anything. So, thank you.
Just as a postscript to that, John, be careful what you wish for, because if we didn't have the nonprofits running these things, we'd be running them ourselves. I'm not sure you want a government that's doing that. So further comments?
Chair?
Hold.
Sorry.
Anybody's hand up? Nothing online, so I'd take a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Moved and seconded to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just as you know, as our numbers came out today, we had some numbers last week, but they were prior to the new numbers coming out today. Our town is valued now at $10.9 billion. The value, the average residential property is now $910,000. Those are the numbers that come from the state, that our staff works with, and that we work with to arrive at the taxation. And we will have, I made four recommendations to you, I will have a fifth recommendation once you vote. If you do decide to follow our recommendations, I would ask then the board to allow the chair to sign electronically. That needs to be signed as soon as possible by tomorrow. So that would be the actual fifth recommendation we will make to you in terms of a motion, if you so choose.
Deliberation, members? Mark?
Just two questions. Exempt properties, did I read it correctly, $620 million, $157,000, and what is that? I, this is from days ago, looking at the packet, and I may be wrong, but I did see exempt property, $620 million.
How was that? Which one? Yep. Where did you see that number?
You know, I forget, but you could probably answer it this way. What would be exempt property?
So the nonprofits?
Correct.
Those are exempt.
And so it'd be nonprofit, agricultural?
So if the agriculture is not exempt, they file a chapter, chapter land lien, chapter 61, so they pay a portion.
Okay. And I'll look it up if I can find it.
Yeah, let me know.
So just in case.
An example of that, Mr. Keller, are churches in town?
Yeah, I understand that. It just seemed like such a high figure, that's why I'll check into it and I'll let you know what I saw. Second question is, this year the tax rate is 5.69? Sorry, I don't remember what it is from last year.
5.91.
Reduction of 22 cents.
But people won't see a decrease in the tax bill primarily because of the evaluations?
I love this question. Thank you for bringing it up, and it's a rookie question, which I love to hear. We do not do anything with budgets in town, okay? As values rise, tax rate will be reduced. If the values are reduced, the tax rate will increase, but actual budgetary items come from town meeting. We have nothing to do with it. We assemble the numbers, we put them together, we look at the overall value, which as it said is $10.9 billion. We look at what needs to be raised and appropriated within our levy limit, and then we arrive at the tax rate. So obviously, with the reduction of 22 cents, the value is increasing. Last week, we were before you, and I think we talked $10.4 billion, and we now are up to $10.9 billion. And that's not going to slow down anytime soon.
And we're looking at trying to make that discussion, a weekly discussion about approved but not yet applied to taxpayers for projects, because there's always jet lag. Oftentimes, it's a year, a year and a half, and they think that you guys did something to their taxes, or that we did. In reality, it's a self-inflicted wound. They approve things at town meeting that hadn't been bonded yet.
And as you remind people, we like to remind people as well when we're here, because we don't want to take the call saying, "You guys are making my taxes go up." And frankly, in some cases, in many cases, people will be paying more taxes next year on their properties. And this is a perfect segue for me to remind people that next month at this time, right after, usually between Christmas and New Year's, you'll be getting your next tax bill. That will have your full valuation on it. And that is the only opportunity for people to file an abatement for their property. There are two reasons to file for an abatement. One, that you believe your property is overvalued, which is fine. Secondly, that you believe there's a factual error in your assessor's record card, commonly known as your field card. And all of those are available either through the office or online. It's a very strict window. You had someone here recently talking about the process of how abatements are done. We can only entertain abatements for 30 days after that bill is submitted. So we call a cutoff date of February 1st. For a lot of our folks who go down south in the winter, who leave right after Christmas, there's no excuse. February 1st is the last abatement application that we receive. If it comes in after that date, we do not accept it, which is allowed by law. If someone files an abatement application, they feel that they're overvalued, I highly recommend folks to talk to their local Realtors. I hate to see people file for an appraisal. You can talk to your Realtor, he'll probably do it at no charge for you, to get a value of your house, bring it into the board. We sit an executive session to look at each and every one of those abatement applications. We encourage people, if they wish to come in in person and to state their case, we love to talk to the public. We will then make a decision based on what we feel is the correct value with the input from our staff. So, great question, and it's a perfect time for us to say, please look at your field card. Look at your assessor's record. When that tax bill comes out, right after Christmas, Merry Christmas, everybody, please check it, make sure the information's correct, or if you believe you're overvalued, file an abatement application.
I didn't mean to cut you off, if you have anything further that you would like to say. Jeff?
I have nothing. Thank you both. Thank you to your whole department.
No, I don't have anything. Good learning experience, thank you.
Pete?
No, I'm ready to move.
To another town?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move to vote a residential factor of 1.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to vote for a residential factor of 1, so that each class maintains 100% of its full value tax share and not shift the tax burden. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move to not grant an open space exemption.
Second.
It's been moved to not grant an open space exemption. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move to not grant a residential exemption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded not to grant a residential exemption. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move to not grant a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded not to grant a small business exemption. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, please, if I could ask the board if you would vote to allow your chairperson, and if you do so, I will need you to sign off this evening, allowing your chair to sign our document electronically.
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded to have the chair authorize to sign the electronic document. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Someone needs to oversee that. It's not going to be us.
Thank God we have Carly here to oversee it.
He doesn't know where he's going to get me to sign it.
You're not leaving this building tonight.
Okay, I think that's our business, so...
Thank you. Glad to see you all. And, you know, again, I cannot emphasize enough, and I will be here at the end of December when that bill comes out, to remind people again about the abatement applications. People say we need to communicate that better, and there's those, again, who go south right after Christmas, and we don't want to hear, "Well, I didn't know that I had to file the application by February 1st."
And while you're here, I just should mention to the public so that they fully understand, we have, none of us, neither the assessors nor the Select Board, have taken a position that it's inexpensive to live here, or that there aren't some things that need to be looked into. This is something that would have caused a dramatic shift and actually caused a dramatic cost increase in the assessor's office. So there are other things that we can discuss to try to deal with the disparity for residents and non-residents, but this was not the right venue for it, and that we felt very strongly about that, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I can, to that point, Mr. Keller made a great point last week. There are those in the community who are dealing with financial hardships. There are seniors, there are younger people. We have nine programs in this town. We're the most proactive Board of Assessors. We just last year voted an Affordable Housing Tax Credit. The director has had six other communities on the Cape call her in the last two weeks about our program, and she did a webinar with the folks from Falmouth, talking about our Affordable Housing Tax Credit. So I understand there are folks in need. We have programs. What we need to overcome is the stigma that some of our folks have, and some of our seniors who say, "Other people need it more than I do." That's not the case. We have the money, we can do these exemptions. People can actually defer their taxes. They cannot pay their taxes and pay when the property is sold. But people don't want to leave their children with any debt. Yet, people's taxes, if it's $6,000 a year, deferring that would mean so much to those people, and a whole lot less to the kids. So if you know of anyone in the community, and I sincerely appreciate you bringing that up, let us know. We would be happy to reach out, explain the nine tax exemption programs that we have in this community that could benefit far greater than a residential tax exemption. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public understood, we're not dismissing their concerns, it's just not the right place to make a decision to do the things that need to happen.
But if there are anyone questions, if anyone's having a tough time, please make the phone call to the assessor's office. We will see what this town can do to assist them.
Okay, and you can adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we go with you?
You can't, just up, sorry.
Yeah, okay. All right, so down to the bottom of the consent agenda, then.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from November 10, 2025, and November 17, 2025.
Anybody have any additions, deletions, changes, anything?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Annual town meeting, town meeting in the budget timeline?
So let's see, a couple of updates. We're still, I'll say, a little bit held hostage by DOR in terms of our free cash, which is holding up a couple items, but we're still relatively okay. We've gotten a couple of questions from DOR, so we know they're actually looking at our submission in our case, so I'm hopeful that it's imminent. I did complete all the departmental review, budget reviews for all the seven departments. Pretty much took the bulk of time the last week, finished those up today. So that's been completed, and we'll change that to complete. The department heads are currently submitting, I'll call placeholder article requests for the annual town meeting. I expect in one of the meetings in December, we'll have at least a list for the board to look at in terms of some of the placeholder items related to some of the article requests, so that is currently in work. The Capitol Committee continues. One of the things I'd like the board to maybe discuss here in a minute, part of this process is have a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Finance Committee to present the capital plan and the budget sometime in December. I initially put it out there for the 29th, but in our recent committee meeting, we're looking to do that on the 22nd, so we're hoping to vote, or the committee hopes to vote on the capital plan and the budget on the 10th of... to vote on the capital plan and the budget on the 10th of December, just give us a little bit of time to clean up any, you know, items on that plan. So I need to try to let the finance committee know so they can plan ahead. So just want to get some feedback on the board, whether the 22nd meeting would be a good night to hold that joint meeting to review the capital plan and the budget.
Sooner is better. The 22nd, okay with everyone?
Twenty, of December?
Yeah.
22nd, yeah.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And I guess if it's not okay with them, then we have to look backwards, I guess.
We're trying to make sure that this maintains itself as being a few weeks ahead of the warrant timelines.
Weeks, months, what do you mean?
Okay. Let's see how it shakes out after the first of the year.
That's true.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, so, new business. Town administrator's recommendations. Tony, you want to handle?
Yep, thank you. So we kind of find ourselves in a little bit of a unique situation with the calendar this upcoming holiday season. So I know, you know, I've been in leadership positions for almost 40 years, you know, and taking care of people obviously is very, very high on my list. And, you know, even though I've been here a short amount of time, staff works incredibly hard every day, even in the midst of, you know, leadership transitions and a lot of things that probably I've asked for that they may not have been asked for before, and everybody's been extremely responsive. So, the situation before us is Christmas Day and New Year's Day both happen to be on Thursdays, and, you know, the last time this happened was 11 years ago. It's one of those things that doesn't occur very often. Did a little bit of research, you know, the next one I think is six years from now, and so it changes based on when leap year is and how the calendar shifts due to that. Obviously, I put in the packet some of the benefits that are available to this. I think I would say, not sort of tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, on those particular Fridays in particular, if the phone rings, it's likely a wrong number. If somebody comes in the building, it's likely they're asking for directions. But I think more importantly for department heads and myself, if offices need to be staffed, you know, obviously we're making, you know, a decision that somebody has to stay behind with, you know, the thought that there's not a lot of, you know, work, you know, people coming in to get, you know, business accomplished when we sort of end up in this configuration. So, looking back, the board did entertain this 11 years ago in 2014 slash 2015, and granted a half-day on Christmas and New Year's Eve, and closed town offices on the Friday after each of those holidays, so I'm making a similar request.
Okay, so you've heard the town administrators' request. Any questions or comments to the town administrator or relative to the discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we vote to approve acting town administrator's recommendations for four select board holidays at town offices.
One through four, then?
One through four.
Of the recommendations?
Of the recommendations.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Pete?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'll put my Grinch hat on once again, as I did last year, and with all due respect to the town administrator, in fact, I spoke to him briefly this evening and told him I'd probably make the same recommendation if I was sitting in his chair, but I'm not sitting in his chair. And this is no disrespect to the town staff or any employee that, you know, has worked for us previously. I just, I have a real issue with it. This is essentially granting five full days off, and a whole lot of five full days off for two Thursday holidays. I'm not sure it's really appropriate of this board to grant such a request. And at a minimum, I would say it's not appropriate to do it without bargaining this. We often, and all due respect to the unions, they have the ability to challenge certain decisions and request that things get bargained in and out, as far as whether it's a memorandum, what the hell's the word?
Memorandum.
Yeah, of understanding, or whichever approach they want to take to put in effect a certain process or situation. So anyway, I'm not going to belabor this with me. Clearly, you all know where I stand. I don't think it's appropriate use of our authority, and I'll be voting against it.
And far from being judgmental over that, you are indeed our fiscal conscience on the board, so I would have expected nothing less than that discussion. So, but any further discussion to the motion?
I would just say, I can see where Pete's coming from. I think we'll be able to make it up in future years where Christmas may fall on a Saturday or a Sunday, and maybe there'll be no days off or just a half-day, so...
The contract calls for a day off, whether it's a Friday or a Monday.
Well, yeah, but we'll limit it that way, so I think this is a happenstance type of thing because of the dates, and so... Appreciate what Pete's saying, but I'm in favor of what the acting town administrator is proposing.
Any other comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the four recommendations as outlined in the administrator's memo to us, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It's four one.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve the appointment of Jennifer Mince as the Finance Director, Town Accountant, effective December 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, just for everybody who's thinking they're living deja vu, we did announce that we'd come to terms with Jen Mince. We are not, we did that in executive session. We are now taking a vote publicly to reaffirm that decision and that she will be starting December 1st, and we're really excited, so...
Who is she?
Well, great, we're both excited there. So any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, Department of Public Works discussion. Link, you're here? Tony's going to join you at the table in front of us, so we don't keep whiplashing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Well, we're bringing the presentation up. I just wanted to just start off with, you know, when the board brought me in and we had some discussions in July, I, you know, shared some of my experience of organizational development in both larger organizations, obviously in municipal organizations as well. And one of the things, wherever I've started as a leader, is like taking a look at the organization right from the get-go, really, and trying to decide, you know, how do we establish what I call the most efficient organization, high-functioning organization, organizations that are set up for success and for excellence? I think some of what I found will probably, you know, be something hopefully the future full-time town administrator will look at, but certain things, you know, sort of caught me right from the beginning, and one of those departments was Mr. Hooper's in DPW. So he and I have had numerous discussions over the course of my first 90 days here, and getting, for me, getting a lot of the background, understanding. Somebody that has, I think, more than 20 years' experience in this position and seen a lot of changes that I think drives really a need and a requirement to not weed on this one and try to propose something that I think will be a benefit not only to the town but also to the department, and so I'll touch on a couple of those. Interestingly, DPW or Division of Highway and Maintenance is in the charter. It's actually a division. There's only two real divisions in the town charter. One's the Division of Finance, and one is the Division of Highways and Maintenance, although a little bit further down under Section 5.3.1, which was, I think, changed a couple of years back, calls it Department of Public Works. So hopefully the Charter Commission will try to figure those two things out, and we have a consistent, I think, Department of Public Works is more reflective of, I think, the job that they have. But the organization in the department has grown significantly over the course of time, primarily with the addition of some major townwide functions in addition to what they already do, one of those being townwide vehicle maintenance, townwide custodial services, and townwide facilities, and some of that infrastructure across our town, and we've had some discussions about facilities and so forth. When you look at budget and personnel, it's the largest department in the town, right? There may be a few, you know, plus or minus one and two in personnel between police and fire, but it is the largest budget in town, and yet it has no structure other than the director and pretty much the people that are doing the work, other than what he has instituted with some of the strong leadership that exists in the department. It's done more in an ad hoc, and I'll say informal, way. And although that may, you know, work occasionally or work, you know, some of the time, it really needs to be formalized, right, so that you have that full structure within an organization this large and with this much impact. But it's also the most complicated when you look at it from a budget standpoint compared to any other department in the town, even if it wasn't the biggest, primarily driven by, I'll say, the expense and revenue side related to the transfer station and some other thing. It's the most complex budget, and we have one person that's managing all that with really out any structure below that. And so what that ends up driving is some inefficiency, organizational inefficiency that, you know, I think prevents perhaps time for some of the bigger picture planning and things that we've talked about even in this room since I've been here, because you're having to deal with all these day-to-day things and managing what are essentially seven divisions within your department with a wide scope of responsibilities. So, this plan provide needed leadership depth and continuity of operation. I think added to the dilemma is Link's getting close to retirement, in the next 12 to 15 months. So, that is something that'll be a great loss to the town, but now I want to take a look at what makes more sense. And I forgot to advance any of my slides.
Are you still trying to get the slide up?
We noticed. Anyways, you have it in your packet, so hopefully you're following along.
Well, why did everyone down to look at our computer?
Yes, I know. I got so excited about this, I forgot my own stuff. So anyways, when you look at the current organizational structure, I don't think anybody that's even looked at an org chart would agree that it's extremely flat and spread out with no intermediate structure. As far as recommended reorganization, kind of get to the crux of it. So the town charter under Section 4.5.1 authorized the town administrator the ability to organize, reorganize, abolish divisions and departments that are under the town administrator's control, certainly with a vote of the select board along the way. And so this request tonight is to establish, formally establish... Are we there yet?
Can you start over?
Absolutely. I have no notes, I'm not sure I'll say the exact same thing, but...
The bullet points are interested at this point.
That's okay.
Is that very one?
Yep. Just trying to see if I can advance here. Make sure my clicker's working.
You just told me there's a slide up here, too.
What's that?
You told me there's a slide on my head.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, just, go ahead. All right, so that's the current organizational structure. You can go ahead, one more.
Thank you.
All right. So essentially, it would be to establish a deputy position reflective of the department's span of control, broad reach across a number of diverse areas, and be commensurate with other departments, such as the Police Department and the Fire Department, which have similarly large budgets, large numbers of personnel, and a long span of control that frankly goes 365 in terms of how the department operates in many respects, particularly during snow events, emergencies, other things. Transfer stations open every day but two during the year, so if the phone rings, it's going to be his phone that rings, where he can share some of that, just like the Police and Fire Departments do. So from a funding perspective for FY '26, this change would result in the DPW be able to absorb within their current appropriation, so no new funding would be needed. It also doesn't increase his full-time equivalence. We had long discussions about the board's, you know, desire, particularly in the next budget cycle, about adding staff. So, part of it is a little bit of an internal reorganization, him looking at positions. There's been a vacant scalehouse position for some time, which, you know, doesn't need to be put into the rotation for his operation, and so from an FTE perspective anyways, it'd be a neutral effect there related to that. Looking ahead to FY '27, obviously that would continue to carry forward in terms of no growth in full-time equivalence for the position, and substantially funded by the funding that's already coming from that position. So, some of the changes in movement of personnel, who may be up here, and now new people coming in to fill those positions, come in at a much lower step, which provides additional headroom from a funding perspective that doesn't require an increase in funding for the DPW to be able to fund the position and any other vacancies that may result from that. It would establish, obviously, the proper structure within the DPW, and appropriate divide the various subareas, functional areas between the director and the deputy, which again, long-range planning, strategic planning, looking at some of the larger planning efforts that we know are going to come down the pike in a number of areas, will lob the, sort of dividing that up and be able to make, I think, larger gains in addressing some of those issues that, again, we've talked about, some of that related to roads, related to traffic, related to master facilities plans, really some of the bigger picture kind of things that are done at a more senior, you know, management level. So this is what the new structure would look like, and provide some depth and also oversight. I know it's hard to see the black lines on that, but essentially, the deputy, and part of the new job description that was written, is looking at some of the bigger picture facilities planning, and would be in charge of the facilities department, right, from a maintenance manager, and some of those requirements, as well as cemetery parks and beaches. So, it's notional, obviously, the director, based on their skill set, just like I would with between myself and an assistant town administrator, you look at everybody's skill sets, and some of that obviously could be moved around at the director's discretion. This more fits the current scenario with Link's background and understanding of the department and others. This is kind of how we look to start things off. Next slide? So from a recommendation standpoint, the request is asked the select board to endorse and approve by vote the acting town administrator, myself's proposal, to reorganize the Division of Highway and Maintenance slash Department of Public Works, and to create a new position called Deputy DPW Director in the Personnel Bylaw, rated M7, consistent with both the Deputy Police Chief and Fire Chief, and formerly the Assistant Town Administrator. So, I'll stop there and let Link say a couple of words, and then obviously we can answer questions the board may have in terms of the proposal implementation and so forth. Over to you.
Thank you.
All right?
He said I was garnished.
No, no.
He meant he was going to garnish your wages to pay for this, that's what he meant. It's not the sense I meant. I very much appreciate Tony working on this. We spent a lot of time discussing it, and my humble opinion, it's long overdue. We have a department of 39 full-time employees in seven divisions, a $7.2 million budget. It has worked, the structure that, I'd like to say I inherited, but let me go back. In 2005, we had a failed override. 2006, the Assistant Director retired, and it was more important at that point and juncture to put that funds from that position into the labor pool and provide direct services to residents than it was to maintain that director position, and the Assistant Director. We've developed this deputy position because this job has grown tremendously. The boards over the years have added a whole bunch of functions, as well as people, to this. Ironically, I've done this table here that shows, I can't see it, that's the number of people in the DPW. There's less people today in the highway function than there was when I started with the department in '91, believe it or not. But some others have grown, facilities, like Tony has grown, you know, centralized vehicle maintenance... maintenance, custodial function, and I'm sure I am missing some. The job has grown and we've made it work because I've had the right people in the right positions and we've managed collectively to get it done for the town. I think the time has come to take a hard look at this and I, I hope we could develop this deputy position and get somebody there, you know, and Tony touched on it, but I, it was very strange, this budget, to actually budget for my own retirement next year. You know, that's not an academic exercise. I've worked for the town at this point at 35 years. Started it at the disposal in 1991, running heavy equipment and driving trailer. And this has been a great privilege to be the DPW Director and work for the town. And I'd like to, I'd like to think I'm leaving it in very capable hands and this is a step in that direction.
Questions, comments from the board?
Mark?
A vacant scale position, is that when you drive into the dump, are you attendant there? Because there's already somebody there, so I don't understand it.
It's rotation.
Well, this is, that's, that's correct, Mr. Hall. This is a seven-day-a-week operation. Yes, there's full-time people there. Yes, that person has paid time off and so forth. And then we have a foreman that fills in on that position and we have one other guy. The business model, really, at one time, we needed that position. Business has declined over the last year, year and a half somewhat. It's no longer as critical as it once was. And again, I think we have the right people in the right positions, so I've chose not to fill that position.
Just one second question. Facilities will be covered by this position at least partially for a time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other members?
Sure. Question is, if you weren't trying to build this within the confines of no increased FTEs and/or impact to budget, would it look different than this?
No, I don't, I don't think so, because I think the opportunity that, that he, you know, has within his department now as he re-looks at, I'll say reinvesting or, or shifting positions based on what is required today. Now, that's not to say that a couple of years from now, that there may be a need to fill that. That's why we're not suggesting eliminating that, that position. But I think as you look at organizational structure, as you mentioned, there's less highway people now than when he started, but that shifted over to some other part of his operation based on needs, right? And so that is somewhat can be a little bit of a fluid environment. You know, certainly there's plenty of work to, to go around, I would say, and from a facility standpoint, you know, with the amount of buildings we care for and all of that, that at some point you'd fill out your facilities. And I'm talking about the worker level, right? So the, the thought here is the, the deputy handles a lot of the big picture facilities planning pieces that we talked about and capital and some of that. And then the position below that is somebody that's out and they're looking at, you know, maintaining HVAC systems and lighting and all the things that go on in the various buildings. So in a, in a perfect world, I think that's an area that, that DPW should look at and the town should look at growing at some point, because that's where I'd say most of the value in the town is in our facilities and, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. We want to make sure we're getting the full useful life out of that. So as we build out that large facility master plan, if you will, my guess is it'll, it'll show us that we need to put more care and feeding into our, into our buildings on a day-to-day basis from a maintenance standpoint, et cetera. So that, you know, is probably bigger than a one-person job, but I think we have to grow into that a little bit as, as we look and see how this functions first and then see what other maneuvering needs to happen to best meet, again, a seven-division department and what they have to do. That's the way I would look at it anyways.
One more question, so.
Anita?
No, the only thing that I could say is, you know, from 1991 to 06, when the override happened, changing, the change in this department has been huge. And I think what you're trying to do, what I feel at this point in time, is you're trying to come up to today's standard and what this profession, professional, you know, group should really be handling. So I commend you for trying to bring this forward.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both. I think quickly, the presentation's perfect. I can picture it, I can see it. You've both done a great job articulating how, there is no yes without the how, and you, you've demonstrated that for me. I, I think it's, as you put it, Link, long overdue. So I'm, I'm in full support of this.
Okay, so you want to do this as two separate motions or, or do you want to combine them? I'm willing to accept a motion, let's put it to you that way.
What am I missing, Mr. Chair, on the?
You either have to approve the motion to reorganize the organization in accordance with the town administrator's recommendations and place it into the PBL, actually.
At M7, yes.
At, at M7.
So moved.
Didn't think it was making motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, both to create the position at the recommendation of the town administrator and to put it into the grade seven in the personnel bylaw. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Well done.
I want to steal my glasses.
No, sir. Thank you. Back to work.
Thank you very much.
Good, good, good. Mr. Chair, I move we approve a temporary closure of Cape Seagrill, 31 C Street, Howard's Worth, closing December 7th, 2025 through March 31st, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and double seconded to approve the closure from December 7th to March 31st. I will offer my gratitude that they've actually asked for this before they closed. It's not always been the case, not for them, but for others. So it's, the motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to amend a special permit application for Harwich Crabery Festival for entertainment, one-day liquor license, wines and malts, craft fair and event, for an event to be held on September 19th, 2026 from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and September 20th, 2026 from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Event to be held at 100 Oak Street, approved at October 27, 2025 meeting. Added dates include September 15th, 2026 through September 18th, 2026, to allow for setup and required inspections.
Second.
It's a long motion, but any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve a special permit application for Bernadette Waystack for one-day liquor license, wines and malt, for an event to be held on December 11th, 2025 from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Event to be held at 204 Sisson Road.
Second.
It's been seconded to grant the special permit for Bernadette's one-day liquor license. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we, we approve a special permit application for Jessica Gomes for one-day liquor license, wines and malt, for an event to be held on November 30th, 2025 from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 554 Route 28, Unit 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the application for Jessica Gomes for her one-day liquor license request. I will know she's on Zoom if anybody has any questions, but any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the following 2026 carbon victualers license renewals. A, 400 East, doing business as 400 East Restaurant and Bar, 1421 Orleans Road. B, NYC Twisted Incorporated, DBA, Twisted Pizza, 181 Route 137. C, Harwich Port House of Pizza Incorporated, 330 Route 28. D, Beachlight LLC, DBA, The Seal Pub and Cafe, 703 Main Street. E, The Stop and Shop Supermarket LLC, doing business as The Stop and Shop, Number 475, Starbucks, 111 Route 137. F, Brax Landing Restaurant Management, doing business as Brax Landing, 705 Route 28. G, Zoo, Zhao Garden, doing business as Sejuan Delight, 1421 Orleans Road. H, Ruggies, doing business as Ruggies, 707 Main Street.
I'll second all of that.
I'm hungry.
You, you apparently don't get out to Chinese restaurants often. Any further discussion about the vittlers, but we'll forgive you.
Vittlers, okay.
Yeah, because the westerns, you gotta go back and read vittles. It's about cooking.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the following 2026 auto license renewals. A, Snow Small Engine, 260 Route 28, Auto Class Four Auto Repairman. And B, Wayne's Auto Service, 643 Main Street, Auto Class Four Auto Repairman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two 2026 auto license renewals. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. As we start out with these, for the entertainment license renewals, we will be having a discussion later on in this agenda to launch a process to deal with this in a more comprehensive way. I am hoping to convince the members that whatever they do tonight will just renew under the existing terms and conditions of the licenses and whatever restrictions that were imposed there on for the coming year until we can have a more comprehensive approach that we have agreed to, to deal with the entire district, if not the whole town broken up into seven districts. But it's just a thought, but I would, I would hope that we'd consider that.
Mr. Chair, please correct me if I read any of these incorrectly. I move that we approve the following 2026 entertainment license renewals. A, 400 East, doing business as 400 East Restaurant and Bar, 1421 Orleans Road, weekday.
Before you get into that, or any, Jen, are any of these different from the prior year that are listed here?
Yes, so Ember Pizza Incorporated is asking for something different from last year.
But the others are not.
From my knowledge, the others.
Would it be sufficient for you, for, for you to be able to develop the actual licenses, for you to hear a motion that just extends the existing terms, conditions and restrictions on each of these entertainment licenses for all of them before he has to go through every single time and date?
That's fine.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the existing conditions and time restraints as follows.
Renewal.
Mm-hmm. For renewal. 400 East, doing business as 400 East Restaurant and Bar, 1421 Orleans Road. Ember Pizza, doing business as Ember, 600 Route 28. C, Red River BBQ LLC, DBA, Red River BBQ, 787 Route 28. Beachlight LLC, DBA, The Seal Pub Cafe, 703 Main Street. And that is it?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And I, I was, I was reading the grid, so whoever did that, thank you.
That was Jen.
Thank you. And I was trying to listen. There was a mention that the only change was for Ember. Is that correct?
The only request is for Ember, yes. So there are a couple of script errors that we're correcting from the last cycle, but nothing, no real changes, if you will.
All right, so my question then to anyone would be, should we carve Ember Pizza out since Mark read them all?
You could do any, any number of things, if that's what you want to do.
If that's the one that's different than what they've already had, the others, I'm understanding, are all the same and they would just be simple renewals? So I would like to carve out a one.
Okay, but this is a renewal that he's recommending without the enhancements that they're requesting. Their license already exists with the restrictions in them. They would be getting more than that and I would probably want a public hearing for that kind of move.
Okay.
But I'm willing to do whatever anybody else wants to do.
What does the rest of the board think, if I may ask through you?
Yeah, sure. Board?
Do that one separate? Is that the question?
That's my question, yes.
I have no problem if you want to do it separate from the others. I, I actually have another comment about a different application after the rest of the board response.
My benefit, these are just renewals. It doesn't include any new asks. I don't know when these licenses expire, but at least we clear up a lot of these and we can move along and we can, you know, the additional ask, we can address at some future point.
Anita?
I feel the same way that Mark does, sorry.
Well, that would mean that even if Jeff is not going to get that, that Pete might want to make a comment about the other license that we're.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll comment on is I didn't take it to be that we wouldn't vote on that one tonight, but I could be wrong.
I didn't either.
So in any event, my, my other question, my, my other comment relates, relates to license request A. I, I deem the, personally deem the application incomplete. They've selected Group Three and Group Three indicates that they are required to expand on what, if having live or recorded music, please state below exactly what kind. And there is no indication on either application, either the Sunday or weekday, what kind of entertainment they'd be offering.
That would be 400 East. We could hold, hold that back. Jen, is there any possibility getting to them so that that's on the next agenda?
So if you look on the, nope, never mind, hang on. Yes, I can do that. If the board wants to hold it, I can have them provide additional detail on Group Three.
My only comment to the board is I think it's important for us to make sure we are consistent in our behavior and so I would recommend that we, as much as I don't want to, because I think it's going to be a quick correction, that we wait on this one and bring it forward once it's complete.
The 400 East again.
400 East.
Can you drop that from your motion?
Sure. I amend my motion to remove 400 East from my motion.
It shouldn't be read into if they're listening. It's, you just need to complete the application as noted. Okay, so the rest of these are renewals at the current rate of approvals, all the times, dates, any restrictions that were placed on them in previous years? Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pete will be joining us momentarily. All in favor?
The motion was to what?
Approve them without the, the 400 East.
With past criteria in place?
Yeah, with past, all past restrictions and all past approval, times and dates for what it would apply to.
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve the acting town administrator's recommendation to grant permission by N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy to install one new handhole, 77 dash HA3 and 39 feet plus or minus a three-inch conduit on Wales Road. Want me to read the rest of these?
Yeah, unless anybody has one that they want to be pulled out.
No, if we, I'm trying to find it, if you give me one second. And I know it states it in their communication and in town administrator's report to us, but if you could just include, Mark, that they return the area back to its previous condition as part of your motion.
Okay, on all of them?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me start again. I move we vote to approve the acting town administrator's recommendation to grant permission by N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy to install one new handhole, 277 slash HA3 and 39 feet plus or minus a three-inch conduit on Wales Road and it will be returned to its original condition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first request from EverSource Energy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve the acting town administrator's recommendation to grant permission by Verizon New England and N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy to install one jointly owned, mid-span pole, P55 on the south side of Orleans, Howard's Road and to return to the original condition, to the original site condition.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the recommendation to grant permission from Verizon and N-Star as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve the acting town administrator's recommendation to grant permission by N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy to install 10 feet plus or minus a three-inch conduit on Bank Street and to return the site conditions as they were existing before the work was initiated.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the recommendation to. to grant permission to N-Star and to return the site to its original condition conclusion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, moving along. As I said, this is not an endpoint. This is really just the beginning point in reality. We've had a discussion about this. Each member has a slightly different flavor of what they're trying to accomplish, but we all recognize that there, and I believe that there was some data provided to us that a lot of these people have lived there long before some of these conditions existed. So it isn't, they moved next to the airport. So with that, we have to move forward with the discussion. There is an interrelationship between the, we have a noise bylaw. That covers the whole town. And that was voted as a bylaw through town meeting. How that interacts now, since that was actually enacted, is kind of different because we used to do these entertainment licenses, and they were decoupled from the liquor licenses. They are now basically one and the same. In order for you to ratchet in any approvals, even when it's just entertainment, it affects the liquor, the alcohol pouring license. As such, it's a lot more difficult, once you approve it, to pull it back than it is to make the approval. And the board had indicated a certain willingness when we were talking about another licensee in the area to discuss the overall thing. The only thing, the only thing I will caution you on, in addition to the interaction of those two documents, you know, the licenses that have conditions in the noise bylaw, is the fact that if we do go the bylaw route, we're looking at a town that's got 34 square miles, it's got seven villages, and each one of them has different problems and probably different solutions. And if it does go the bylaw route, it'll have to be approved at town meeting through an article. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Bob Cohen from Pleasant Street. So I wanted to make a couple of different comments, but one, speaking right to the issue of the bylaw. Back in, I'm basically confused about where the bylaw sits because back in February 22, in February of 2022, the board voted to exempt liquor license holders. Let me just hand out this. Voted to create a town, a town meeting warrant article for.
You can't be, yeah, you can't be heard by anybody but us.
No one can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So back in February of 2022, the select board had a motion that passed, and that was to add a warrant article to the annual town meeting. And that, and the wording that was said was to exempt, I believe it's to exempt, amend the noise bylaw by exempting Mass General Law, Chapter 138 licensees. What actually went into the town meeting, into the article, is what you see at the bottom of that page. And striking out, and a violation of any such allowances or restrictions also constitute a violation of this bylaw. So my reading of that is that there was no exemption, rather that that exempted liquor license holders from being punished under the bylaw for things that, infractions under the liquor license. So basically, not much change. Meaning that liquor license holders are still, by my reading, and I'm not a lawyer, so I may have this entirely wrong. By my reading, it looks like liquor license holders are still liable under the bylaw for any noise infractions, including crowd noise, which is important because a bylaw uses the 150-foot plainly audible standard, whereas liquor license regulations do not for non-entertainment noise. So I don't know where it stands. I don't know how, my understanding for the last three years was that liquor license holders were exempted and that HPD didn't enforce things for liquor license holders under the bylaw. I don't know what the case is. And I don't know how to read this or understand it.
Not really, Bob. I don't want to get everybody overly excited tonight. This is a launch point, a beginning point, so that we can clear up ambiguities and actually go forward with something that's cohesive and understandable at all. So nothing is going to be done tonight. We're just mapping out how.
No, no, I'm not asking for anything to be done. I just like to understand.
We're going to be mapping out how we approach this and where the inconsistencies are. That's going to take a whole bunch of unraveling to get to. But the fact that the board has, given the last liquor hearing that we went through, again, we went through a liquor hearing because the entertainment license is an adjunct to that. It's part of that license. So we have to recognize that and that mechanism because that's under Mass General Law for pouring or for whatever, since that's co-joined now. So whatever we do is going to examine what's being asked for the general public and how that applies to the licensees too. But we're going to, that's where it's going to be a slog. We're going to have to get town council involved. First, we have to decide, what are we trying to do here? And I think what we're really trying to do is something coherent because the license holder's lawyer pointed out that it seemed like we were being inconsistent. The only way to make that consistent is by applying some sort of uniform rule structure across all of the licenses, which we don't have right now. But you point out an interesting thought, but I will say, because I know that you've been involved with this since the infamous COVID hearings, that we have made great progress in trying to rein in what's going on in Harwich Port to try to make sure that both the residents and the businesses coexist in a way that they can both live with. So that's what we're trying to do.
No, I get it, I get it. And that was just a side issue because you were talking about bylaw and stuff, and I just wanted to raise that. But the main thing I wanted to say, if I can.
Oh, yeah.
I was encouraged by the board's discussion in September about the entertainment policy. It seemed that the board was open and willing to tackle the problem in an open-minded way, and that is very much welcome and appreciated. That being said, I and a dozen, couple dozen residents sent you an email recently. I wanted to talk to you about what I consider the most important point, namely that I think Harwich's current entertainment policies are seriously out of whack with pretty much every other town on the Cape and probably off Cape as well. And I know what you just said, Mr. Howell. I think the reason it seemed better is because a lot of people don't, a lot of the venues don't have amplified outdoor entertainment licenses. And that is not going to continue to be, right? So if, depending.
They are granted, they're not due to anyone.
So I know that board and the town at large wants businesses to succeed, and residents are fully behind this too. But at the same time, I think we need to draw the line at allowing, let alone promoting, harmful business practices. And that's a line I think the town has gone over by a great deal for many years. The loud entertainment, the crowd noise, the rowdy behavior, the constant need for residents to monitor and police their neighborhoods, all of this has had a serious detrimental effect on residents, and we'd like it all to finally end. Looking ahead to discussions about the outdoor entertainment, I would hope that we could shoot for normalcy and the kinds of regulations we see in other Cape towns. And that would be our starting point, our baseline expectation. Not just because it's widely regarded as reasonable and fair, but also because it's what's worked for many years in other towns, as opposed to what we have now in Harwich, which has been found to not work. I'd also suggest we keep in mind what things cross the line and become harmful because that's what we want to avoid. So that's what I suggested, some simple guidelines for discussions going forward. Shoot for normalcy, avoid or keep harmful business practices in check. And if we're able to attain that, I believe residents would regard that as fair. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would suggest we have a more universal beginning point for the board to consider if everyone's of the mind to do this. The first place I would go to, if you don't think that something is working out well, is the people who are being told to enforce it, to come in and say, how difficult is this? If it is difficult, why? What would help you if we changed something or other? It also is going to need some input from businesses and from residents in order for us to, you know, do a full review of this thing. All I'm looking for right now is an agreement that we want to pursue this as a discussion in the upcoming months. And again, I would suggest that the next move we make is try to get public safety in here to see what is the problem? What's, is there an abundance or are there an abundance of complaints? And are you frustrated because you can't enforce certain things because of certain other things? I'm not sure. I'm not enforcing them, and none of us are either. So if there's challenges that are out there, I think it's important to hear from the people who have to enforce it first, and then we'll figure out back engineering how to actually fix that, if that sounds reasonable to everybody.
I don't have a problem asking the police and the fire to come in and give us their thoughts and opinions. I'm not sure it's going to align with what the residents have to share.
Yeah, I get it.
And so it may not capture everything that needs to be captured. This is, excuse me, this process is probably going to be a little bit convoluted and bumpy as we begin.
And lengthy.
And lengthy. And I'm glad everybody's sitting down. It's probably going to have to involve legal counsel. And, you know, we're going to have to get the best opinions and how we can move forward. Because I think there's probably some different opinions on this board as to what we would be willing to allow and what we absolutely wouldn't entertain. No pun intended with that terminology. So, you know, I think we have a greater discussion to be had amongst us as a body to figure out what path we might want to start heading down. And again, no disrespect to the residents or the business owners, but ultimately, the decision's going to fall back to us. And whether it's an enforcement thing that we need to take care of or if it's a recommendation we bring to the town on town meeting for some changes, that also would come from us. So, excuse me, again, I believe there's a greater discussion to be had. No one group's going to come in and be able to clarify and put us on the right path.
I get that. And I guess that's probably, I totally agree with you. I guess that's why this is on the agenda more than any other reason, is take the temperature of the board about where they want to go. Because it has to be driven by us ultimately. So I'm assuming we want to have a follow-on discussion to start to narrow this thing down so that it's bigger, it's smaller in a red basket, then we can actually discuss what it is we want, we're trying to accomplish? Yeah, sure.
First, I want to do this, I talked to this before. And so, but I can give you a hard copy. And one of the reasons I'm doing this is because.
You know that nobody else but you can hear this.
Oh.
That's funny, you have to be in the mic. Should have told him before he came up.
No worries, I've been dropped before.
Just put him in the witness protection.
Say who I am. I can say what I really think. No, that was a good one.
No one will know your name.
All right, Bob Nickerson, Harwich Port. Obviously, I've been involved with this a lot for a long time, just as Bob Cohen has. And some of my points probably are, I don't know, probably just not going to be valuable tonight. But, you know, I think one of the big points is, and I'm going to put this one at the end, and you're going to say this is the wrong one. I probably gave you away. I gave somebody my wrong sheet. No, my last comment I say here. Having the venues participate in any regulations relating to entertainment licenses is like having a fox assisting in building a chicken coop. Not a good idea for the chickens. In our case, not a good idea for the homeowners. They are not thinking about us when they have outside music. I'm telling you that. And so now, we have, the conditions, the way it's set up now, it's 150 foot, not from the source of the sound. You've changed it to the boundary of the property. Okay, so now you've just enlarged it. That's what it says. So the good part, it says, is it can be, can it be heard, which was, you know, then it's a problem, or if it's a nuisance. Now, what happens then is the police are called, and they come out when it was just heard. Then we got into the, I can't hear the words of the song, so it doesn't, I'm not going to write it up. Okay? But if it's a nuisance, that's a nuisance to me. I'm sitting in my backyard, and I'm hearing the drums all night long. That's a nuisance. So this is, the entertainment going on in, in my case, Amber is the one that's closest, then I have to call, and I have to sit there in my house and say, do I get frustrated enough every night to make that phone call? So you need to start thinking about the residents out there as much or more so than the entertainment. Because Amber has not had a low parking lot. It was full all last summer, and they didn't have any outside music. So who are you going to impact? Us. Who's paying the most taxes? Us. So it's, you need to really think through this. It's very unfair for us as residents to be supporting the town and then being hammered with this going on. What's going to happen when Miller gets his business in there? He's going to have a restaurant. You have outside entertainment live again. There's another one. And it's unfair for you, in my opinion, to say, Harwich Port gets these rules, everybody else gets tighter rules. Unfair. Thank you.
I get what you're saying, but that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish, is something that's enforceable.
Sure. I want to compliment Bob for your letter.
What?
The letter you wrote, stay down there. I think it'd be very helpful, if need be, to redact the names of who signed it, that that would come to us in our correspondence file that will be in our packet so everybody can see not only the conditions you've lived under, but what other towns have done. I just found what you accomplished on that just cleared the whole thing. I would recommend the establishments look at that as well. I think it may help us close the differences. That's the main thing. You did a great job with your research. I'd like it to come in our correspondence file. We'll have it in our packet. Please do any redactions if need be, because you did a lot of research. I did note, and I'm holding judgment right now, but many places do not allow on the Cape outside entertainment. So, thank you, but we do want to hear from some of the establishments, in fairness to them. But again, I compliment you for what you did, and I think the town residents should see that. And hopefully, the establishments as well. So, thank you.
I'm trying not to preordain a destination point here. So the next thing that I'm looking for from the board is what next step do you want to see? Because Pete's right, it's a long slog. This is not going to be accomplished in this week or next week. So what would be the next step in your minds? Sure. Go ahead.
Would this be something that this board is interested in trying to bring to this upcoming town meeting?
I think so, but even recognizing that, as you can see, we will have lost an entire liquor license cycle even doing that.
I understand.
And that would be the quickest we could do it.
I understand that.
So.
So if there's going to be a change that requires town meeting, I think, to Pete's point, when you said that there may be board members who have different tolerances for what they're willing to accept or not accept, that conversation needs to begin there, I believe. And I also think, you know, in our last meeting way back, there were a lot of ideas, a lot of opinions by this board kind of put forward. I believe one of them made the Chronicle. And I would just like the public to understand where we're going.
Might I suggest, then, that we try at the early part of the new year to set up a public hearing? To solicit public opinion without any destination point involved in it about what they think works and what doesn't work, and have the residents come in to opine on that.
Yeah, we can certainly begin with a listening tour, so to speak.
That's kind of what I'm talking about.
Get the public's input and anyone else who wants to speak. I'd also like to do a little research of my own of other towns and talk to some police departments of other towns to see how they feel that their regulations and bylaws are working for them.
Jen, if we wanted to do this as a public, a real public hearing, with the two-week notice and all that stuff, is it plausible to get us into mid-January with that?
Yeah.
Does that sound like, I mean, I think that's where the launching point has to be because we're. be, because we're flying somewhat blind. What do we want to do is really dependent on what the public wants us to do. We're not totally dissociated from that. I mean, we're their voice, and whatever the rules we set are the rules that everybody's got to live with, so they can't be decoupled by the residents of the area.
You may want to have it on a light agenda tonight.
When would that be, Mr. Prikarsky? If we could get it done in about 10 minutes, it would have been a light agenda tonight. No, I promise, it would be an agenda that's mostly devoted towards, you know, that at least halfway. But Mrs. Skjavi is sitting there saying, well, gosh, we need to be able to discuss the warrants and the budget, too.
Well, if you approved the budget on the 5th of January, you'll have the 12th to do all this.
We could close the warrant on the 10th of January, and we're all good for the rest of the year.
Probably not.
Bob? Hi, Mr. Chair. So, we've begun developing a set of proposals. Some of them have already been discussed, Mr. Handler's proposal to have police officers monitoring noise on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, Mr. Kelleher's idea to, you know, reduce the times to five to eight. We've got a few other things that are concerns, crowd noise, and so on, but we've developed, we've, we've got like half a dozen, seven or so proposals that are almost ready to, to show you, and we can do that in the next couple of weeks.
If you enter them entertainment policy, we'll start aggregating them all together as one thing, so that when we get to the hearing, we have a starting point for correspondence, too.
So, are you willing for me to send that in, or?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're, we're not saying that we don't want to hear from anybody.
I want to step on toes and so on.
There are no toes to be stepped on. This is this year, that was last year.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question that will help me think-
Yeah.
-as we're moving forward with this. Past practice, at least since I've been on the board, probably before that, the hearing officer for any alleged violations is always the town administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a specific reason for the town administrator to be the hearing officer and not the select board?
It's been done both ways over the last 25 years.
Okay. So there's nothing that precludes, or is it bad practice, I guess I would ask, for the select board?
Did Joe parse that out in a kind of parliamentarian way, that he felt like there could be an arm's-length distance with the person that conducted the hearing, making a recommendation that would be an arm's-length distance to the board having a discussion about the findings? But there's no real, I hate to even bring this up, but we used to do this with dog hearings, too. There's no reason why it can't start with the board other than the fact that the board elected not to do that.
Well, I, I mean, obviously, you can tell where I'm going from my question. I would think this board, given the significance of what we're talking about, this, this board, in my opinion, unless someone can change my mind, should be the hearing officer.
I have no problem with that. What we would have a problem with is, you'd probably want to parse that into its own meeting when it occurs, because you'd have to have, you know, people testifying at something like that, and it can't be mucked up with other agenda items. That, that also is up for grabs. That's a policy. We can change the policy. Whatever it is we decide to delegate, we delegate, and we don't, we don't. So, that's, I wouldn't, I mean, it's not on the agenda for tonight to have that kind of discussion, but it's, it's appropriate to have all discussions relating this. Who enforces it, who listens to hearings, who makes the recommendations, all that's up for grabs. But all I know is that it can't be an arm wrestling feat every time we get to the end of the year about Hatfields and McCoys, the, we want and no we don't, because we've been there, we were stuck at a point now since COVID that we haven't gotten away from. And I think that the residents would like some clarity, and so, so will the businesses, obviously, because they can all plan for that. But if it's disparate, I mean, that was a point that was being made by one of their lawyers, and it probably is true. It's, we need to have some consistency in how, what we're trying to achieve, and who's going to enforce it. So-
As you said, it's going to be a big conversation.
But it's worthwhile.
Absolutely.
And it's going to have a lot of moving parts, so.
Okay. That's all I really wanted out of tonight. So, Tony?
No, and I've seen it done both ways, where the board has done that. I think, you know, related, related to the public hearing in January, you know, figure the temperature of the water, whether that ought to be a standalone meeting, or an extremely light agenda, because it's probably going to be a lot of, you know, discussion, so, that needs time, right, for the board to hear all of that. So, not that you want to add meetings or whatever, but something to consider, you know.
We can have that beginning discussion ourselves next week, agenda. So, okay.
Hundred percent.
We'll slog forward, then, we'll just-
Okay.
Keep moving.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right. So, Mark's been si, not you, Mark, the other Mark, has been sitting on the Zoom call for the entire meeting to hear this. Mr. Greenbow.
Sir.
You want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I move a vote to approve a contract with GHD in the amount of $178,000 for engineering services for Route 28 Phase 1 sewer construction project.
Second.
Okay, so we moved second to approve that. Mark, you have anything you want to ask? Not my Mark, you, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
You're on mute.
If we could do this with all five of our members, the meetings would be very quick. You're on mute.
He's unneeded, but he's up.
I think it's more of a question that your computer isn't set up to use the mic.
Yeah, I asked, I asked Mark to be here just in case there were any questions. So, I mean, this construction phase services agreement is required by SRF, was supposed to be done last week. They gave us a little extension to make sure we get it in as quickly as possible. So essentially, when the Mass DOT project kicks off, the work that GHD will be doing, just like they're doing on our other sewer projects, is helping with oversight to make sure that the construction is done in accordance with the design plans and everything else. So we have these construction phase service agreements on our other project, and this is adding for the Route 28 dry pipe project, so.
You can nod if that's what you would have said, Mark. Okay. So there's a motion.
Thanks for hanging in there, Mark.
I'd get one to nod the other way. Mark, can we do it for less than $178,000?
Let's see if your head works in both directions.
It is a task, it is a task contract, so it's, yeah, right?
You haven't dealt with Pete that much.
He remembers.
I would have been disappointed if he hadn't said that. All right, so any further discussion, hearing none?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. We're doing the sewer project. It would seem to make sense, the water pipe is going to be right there as well.
They're doing it.
Is GHD doing the engineering for the sewer and the water?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what about the contract? Will that be one contract? In other words, you know, they're going to be digging up the street, will that be under one contract, the sewer and the water, one contract?
The Mass DOT, yep, that'll be one contract.
Okay. And last question, will the laterals be put in as they're constructing for the sewer project?
Then I don't know. Nod your head. Were they putting just the pipe?
No stoves.
No stoves.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So now can I take a vote? Okay. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Town administrators report.
Uh, let's see, well, a little bit of announcement happens to be here. Matt, raise your hand over here. So I'm here to announce the appointment of Matt Hamilton, gentleman that we see every, every week, to, to the position of planning assistant in the planning department.
That's great.
Beginning on, sorry, December the 8th. So Matt joins us in that role. He's got a bachelor's degree from UMass in geography and economics, as well as holds a graduate certificate from Northeastern in GIS. So he's got some, some great educational background. He's volunteered in several towns related to mapping and conservation. Chatham was, was one of the towns that he worked in, so he's going to bring a great deal of experience to the planning department. That position's been vacant for some time. We actually have a temp in there right now from a temp agency, just helped keep the paperwork flowing. So we'll be excited to get Matt on board and fill that much-needed position in planning with everything they have going on, as, as we all know, with, with some of the projects and in-town development projects and stuff. So, happy to get, get Matt on board.
Right on, Matt, congrats.
Congratulations.
Who the hell's going to steer the bus back there now?
Where's Caitlin?
It'll all work out.
Anything else? Tony?
No, no, that's it. Like, pretty much covered everything for the meeting.
Pete?
Good.
Pete?
Good. I'm good.
Okay, I thought you meant good, that he didn't have anything more to say.
Good for them, too, yep. Good for all of you.
Anita.
Nothing right now.
All right.
I'm good.
Jeff?
Want to make sure my front door opens when I get home tonight, and say happy 13th anniversary to my wife.
Congratulations.
That's why we scheduled a shorter meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have one thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Tony sent us an email earlier, and it was brought to the intention of the town clerk yesterday, and that we had, we had lost a member of our treasure test committee. He passed away, this George Forrester passed away, and he was a valued member of the treasure test committee, and I think we should just acknowledge that we feel bad for his family, and thank you, Tony, for letting us know, and thank you, Emily, for bringing it forward. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Anita, for bringing that up. I've just got two things. Want to recap what we started out the meeting with. On December 5th, down in Harwichport, near the post office square, there's going to be the Christmas tree lighting at 5:30 PM on Friday. That's December 5th again, not this Friday. And on behalf of the board, I just want to wish everyone in the town of Harwich and beyond the warmest happy Thanksgiving. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Don't all second it at once. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.